Okay, that will take us to our first discussion action item. That is D1 Creek and Watershed Management Plan Adoption.
Good evening Mayor and Council members, or should I say good evening again. While other members of our team are getting online and sharing their screen with the PowerPoint, I'll start us off. Well, let's make sure they're coming on. Okay, good. I feel better now. I need these guys.
There they are.
So it's my privilege to introduce the Creek and Watershed Management Plan for Council Consideration. As noted in the staff report, staff's recommendation is to adopt the city's first Creek and Watershed Management Plan as we believe it will inform a deeper understanding of the health of our abundant creek systems. City staff, the consultant team, and members of our technical advisory committee have been working hard on the plan over a year now, and we are excited to have reached this point. Our presentation tonight will walk the council and public through the plan, and we will be available at the end of the presentation, of course, with any questions that you might have. And before I get into the introductions, I wanted to note that the city has received a lot of public comments regarding this item, and we wanted to address the comments, so we prepared a response to comment table that includes responses to all the comments that were received as of yesterday. Additional comments arrived today, but the responses provided in the table generally address the comments as well. Additionally, staff prepared an errata sheet to address minor changes to the Creek and Watershed Management Plan, and so you'll have, that was posted online and emailed out. The errata sheet should be incorporated into the motion to adopt the plan, and we will briefly touch on the contents of the errata sheet later in the presentation. So providing the presentation tonight will be Senior Planner and Project Manager Andy Newkirk. Andy is accompanied by three members of the consultant team, John Davis and Melissa Blundell from DUDAC, and Anne Center with Balance Hydrologics. And you will hear from each of them during this presentation. We also have Peter Imhoff, the Planning and Environmental Review Director, and members of Public Works staff here tonight, including Director Charlie Ebeling, Open Space Manager George Thompson, and Environmental Services Coordinator Melissa Nelson. And you might be mostly hearing from planning tonight as far as the presentation goes, but we really couldn't have done this without the Public Works participation, and we just wanted to make sure to flag the value of, and the important input that we received from our partners and Public Works. So what we suggest to do is to present the PowerPoint overview of the Creek and Watershed Management Plan, then take questions before we receive public comment, and I'm just checking to make sure that that sounds good with you, Mayor?
I was just wondering, do you think it might be better to have question, a public comment before questions, so if there's something that needs to be answered, or do you think that we should ask our questions first and then go to the public? How do you see it? I think there's going to be a lot of questions, but maybe a lot of them have already been answered.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have a lot of public comments, so I think it just is really what you would prefer tonight, as far as, do you think that, you know, if the presentation might help inform, or at least, you know, set the box for the public comment to give it some context, so we could do the presentation, public comment, then council questions?
Yeah, I think I'd like to do that. Thank you.
We can do that. So Andy Newkirk's going to take it from here, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Anne, and thank you, Mayor Perotti and council members, for the opportunity to present the CWMP tonight. This will go quickly over this slide, we won't read it, but this just provides an outline of the various sections of the CWMP. It's a pretty long document, so this is just kind of guiding you in here, and we'll cover each one of these sections briefly during the presentation. So the first section of the CWMP is just a kind of introduction, kind of lays out some of the geographic context of the plan. We showed you these maps, these next two slides, a couple months ago, but just to reiterate, we have 12 creeks within our city, which is a lot of creeks for a city our size. They typically do not originate in the city. Only one instance, Deveraux and Old San Jose Creek, originate within the city, and only two of the creeks actually drain up to the ocean, kind of at the boundary of the city. Many of our creeks drain into Guelita Slough, but you can see in this map, a lot of the creeks, there's just a short segment of these creeks that are actually within the city. And this map illustrates that further, where kind of the green area is mostly national forest, and then that kind of beige north of the city is unincorporated county. So you see a lot of the watershed area for our creeks actually are outside the city. So that kind of gives a little bit of the context of where our creeks kind of fit into the southern Santa Barbara watershed system. Section 2 provides a brief summary of the outreach effort. This is really to memorialize the effort that was done to illustrate perhaps what could be done in the future for plan updates or similar projects. Just briefly, we've conducted three public workshops, including one earlier this month. We founded a technical advisory committee for the project, we call that the TAC. We've met with them on several occasions, but they've also provided a lot of feedback to get us to the point that we're at tonight through reviewing draft sections of the document and providing invaluable input. So the TAC included members of non-differential organizations that have interests in creeks and watersheds, as well as agency representatives from different local, state, and federal agencies. So we had a really nice blend that helped contribute to what we were able to produce for you tonight. And we did other outreach and updated the website, and we also did a survey. A summary of feedback that we received through development of this project is provided in Appendix A to the plan. So there's those survey results and summaries of workshop information is provided as an appendix to the plan. Section 3 really summates the various regulations and policies and plans that are relevant to city creeks. So this looks at state and federal laws, different agencies that have permitting authority and regulatory authority over creeks, our own plans and policies and the general plan and the Guelita Municipal Code, and then also discussion of kind of existing projects that we have, existing plans, existing projects, and then also other actors that perform activities within our creeks, like the flood control, Santa Barbara County Flood Control District. Really, this whole section is trying to put a lot of information to one place about the different moving pieces and different entities engaged in creeks, so that when we think about kind of collaboration and all the different intricacies, we have all that information in one place in the document as a reference tool. So with that, Section 4 really gets into the meat of the CWMP, Sections 4, 5, and 6. And at this point, I'll hand it over to John Davis with DUDAC, who's the project manager for DUDAC, and he'll walk you through a little summary of Section 6.
Thank you, Andy. Section 4 describes the baseline water characterization, generally for the entire watershed, and more specifically for the individual creeks that traverse the city and their subwatersheds within the city boundaries. It really should be noted that the consolidation of baseline conditions for, that's displayed in Section 4 for the city creeks and watersheds, has really not been previously done to this extent. So it's a huge undertaking. Section 4 was developed through three seasons of field surveys and an intensive literature and GIS data review. This is all done in collaboration and coordination with and peer reviewed by the TAC and the city stakeholders. So this section provides an overview of the current status of the creeks and their watersheds, and it includes the three main categories, the hydrology and water quality, channel geomorphology, which Anne Center will discuss next, and biological resources. The section also includes more specific details associated with individual creeks, for topics such as land use, beneficial usage and water quality impairments, flooding, biological resources, riparian birds, as well as wildlife corridor and linkages. So this is one of the many tables that summarizes the data collected and reviewed in Section 4. And as you can see, Table 2 provides a summary of the subwatershed areas by jurisdiction. You can see along the top row, and creeks and their watersheds, which is on the left column. The specific takeaway from this table, and the reason is shown here tonight, is to emphasize the amount of area of the watershed that is within the city of Guelita. So earlier, Andy showed you more of a graphical display on a more of a map, and here is the tabulator form, the summary of creek and watershed areas within the city as well as other neighboring jurisdiction. And it's shown here approximately 15% of the watershed area is under the jurisdiction of the city, which later plays into the importance of a multi-jurisdictional cooperation discussed in Section 5 and 6, where impairments and actions are discussed and presented. So touching here on hydrology and water quality, obviously, they were assessed for each creek within the city and the watershed. The figure displayed presents an example of information related to impairments discussed further in the plan for each creek. This overview figure also provides, you know, again, the extent of creeks in the watershed areas displayed earlier by Andy, and this is just a different graphic, where the blue is obviously the entire watershed boundary, and then the black boundary down below is the city of Guelita. The figure also identifies beneficial usage, so each of these tables that are called out for each creek provides the beneficial uses of each of the creek identified by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and then also the known impairments, which is on the right column for each table. Although this figure is specific to hydrology and water quality, you know, again, we can't overemphasize the need for a multi-jurisdictional approach, as the majority of the creek segments and upper watersheds are in, are north of the city of Guelita, as well as some portions south of the city. At this point, I'd like to hand it over to Anne Center to discuss the geomorphology.
Good evening. So channel geomorphology includes channel features such as slow-moving pools and fast-moving riffles, as well as in-between glides and runs, as well as in-channel bar features where rocks of different sizes accumulate along the edges of a creek. The wide variety of physical in-stream features provide variations in habitat for aquatic and terrestrial species, as well as riparian vegetation that healthy creeks depend on. So it's important to understand the geomorphology of creeks, because the physical nature or lack thereof of the channel directly affects the hydrology, water quality, and biology of the watershed. So we conducted a series of field site visits that are summarized here. We did that last year, and what we did is characterize multiple sections of every creek in Guelita. For instance, here you can see that Maria Abnasio, we went to three different spots. During the visits, we recorded observations about channel features and took photos for documentation. The observations are described in Section 4 for each creek in text, and I think an accompanying photo or two. And then Table 4, in front of us here, provides a good summary resource about each site visit, and allows for comparisons between sites on a creek, as well as between creeks. So our general conclusions about channel geomorphology is that the city of Guelita contains a wide range of creek conditions, from a nice functional channel geomorphology that clearly supports a wide range of habitats and critters that depend on the habitat, to concrete channels that contain no features and therefore supports no habitat for critters. And with that, I'm going to handle, hand it over to Melissa Blundell.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Anne. So as John had mentioned earlier, we also collected baseline information, and Anne has mentioned, we collected baseline information related to biological resources for each creek. This table here provides an example of one of the components we collected, which is vegetation communities and land cover types. So it's just provided. Baseline information is described for each individual creek in Section 4. So each creek section starts out with a quick stats table, as shown here, which provides quick information on a variety of topics for each creek, including hydrology, geomorphology, and biology. This slide is two parts. So one is the bigger example on the right, which displays the additional biological resource components collected in the field, including but not limited to the vegetation communities and land cover types shown in the filled polygons, areas where significant non-native invasive species were affected, and those are shown in red triangles, and the locations of pools and riffles shown in blue circles and the dotted thick lines. So this is just some of the data that we collected among the other data that was biologically, and that is fully described in Section 4. In the spring and summer, we also performed wildlife camera and tracking studies, and right-wing bird surveys contribute baseline data. The mountain lion shown here was captured walking downstream on San Pedro Creek. Section 5 discusses the potential impairments associated with the larger watershed and within the city of Guelita. Section 5 discusses topics related to hydrology and water quality, channel geomorphology, biological resources, flood control activities, climate change, and safety. And this is an example of one of the tables in Section 5. There are similar tables for hydrology and water quality and geomorphology. And this table here is for biological resources. And as you can see, these tables summarize the impairments by each creek. And here in the biological, in the summary of biological impairments by creek table, we see some examples such as trash and debris, potential for pollutants, and more. With that, I'll hand it back to Andy.
Thank you, Melissa. So we took, we took all our baseline information in Section 4, identified impairments in Section 5, and then Section 6 is the kind of the heart of the management plan, looking at the implementation program, what we will do moving forward to address those impairments that have been identified. Section 6 includes 15 programs, each with a goal, strategies for implementation, and then a series of actions to meet the goal. There's quite a few actions, I think a total of 188 total, so it's a pretty large number. Some of them are just continuations of existing practices, like applying development standards to new projects to ensure that they don't impact floodplains or biological resources within creek corridors. But there are new programs, new projects that have been identified, and so it's important to understand that Section 6 represents an aspirational set of actions. Because there is no specific funding to implement these, all of these actions at this time, nor is there a specific staff member kind of waving in the wings to begin the implementation process. So over time, these actions will need to be reviewed and priorities considered during work programming and budgeting, and we'll just discuss that more. But it's important to understand that this is kind of a big list of things that we should and could do, but over time, we'll have to kind of work on that implementation as resources are available. So like I mentioned, there's 15 total programs. We won't go into too much detail about each one of these programs. They're summarized in a little detail in the staff report, but it's hard to summarize everything in any reasonable amount of time here. But we did want to just kind of flag a few things. The first set of programs are really more administrative and kind of outreach and coordination focused, including plan management, which calls for updates to council every two years on the status of implementation. The idea here is that that can then inform the budgeting process, so we can provide an update, identify what has and has not been done, and then priorities can be set and budgeting can be addressed to meet those priorities. Also, I wanted to note, there's this program specifically for funding, because funding will be important to have adequate implementation of the plan. There's an appendix dedicated to listing potential funding sources, including local sources, but also other grants at the regional, state, and federal level. And one of the actions is to make sure we're updating and tracking potential funding sources over time as those will change. That table would become stale if we don't update it fairly quickly. And then the public input process will be really important. I should mention the inter-agency and nonprofit coordination. And we've mentioned several times already that if we just look at our creek segments in a vacuum, that misses a whole lot of our creeks and watersheds. We certainly focused on our own segments when we looked at the baseline characterization and impairments, but working regionally, working with other agencies, engaging on a watershed scale will be really important. And to maintain the relationships that we've been building through the development of the CWMP will also be really important. And then with reviewing, or with public education and engagement, that's really getting out and engaging with the public to ensure that their voices continue to be heard through the implementation of the CWMP. One of the things that's specifically called out is an advisory body. The plan doesn't specifically call it exactly what that should look like. There's some possible options listed, and that can be further teased out as part of the work program and budgeting, as depending on what kind of type of model is used, that may have different implications, if it's a creation of a new commission versus something more informal or utilizing an existing commission. The second set of implementation programs is more on-the-ground action, so that includes things like addressing non-native invasive species, planting trees to improve riparian habitats, creek restoration enhancement projects. So that's, some of those are some of your bigger projects, like removing, you know, fenced revetment that's in the middle of some of our creeks. Some of those will take further to implement, but we also list existing capital projects, for instance, that either directly improve on the impairments identified, such as like trash capture capital projects, and other projects that maybe have a different primary purpose but can serve to improve, to provide restoration within our creeks. Also wanted to note that we included Program 15, which is protection base flows. We heard a lot of comments in the process about concerns about reduced flows, water flows within the creeks themselves over time, and so that program specifically looks at what could be done to study, to study flows. We don't have a lot of stream flow gauges on creeks within the city, so we're kind of limited in the data that we're able to look at. And so looking at how we can track that over time and try to identify over time if there are impaired flows and what can be done to address those. So that's kind of high-level view of the programs. Again, there's a lot of actions that we'll need to assess over time and prioritize over time after adoption of the CWMP as we move forward with work programming, specifically with Public Works, and budgeting to ensure that where we are seeking to do things is adequate staffing and other funding to actually see through those projects, and that will be balanced with other needs within the city. Finally, there's a long set of appendices, won't go into too much detail here. Melissa mentioned that we did wildlife and bird surveys. This year, that was a contract amendment we did early in 2020. The reports that summarize those efforts are provided in appendices E and F. Appendix I are project description sheets, so this kind, these provide kind of a high-level look at some of the projects that could be used to improve the geomorphology impairments within the city creeks, and could be developed into CIPs over time. And then also, we already mentioned Appendix J, which is potential funding sources and their actions in Section 6 to maintain this list of potential sources and to seek out funding both internally and externally, where opportunities arise to help kind of bridge that gap on funding the implementation programs. So in terms of environmental review, the CWMP is exempt from CEQA as it's a planning project, and anything, any future projects on the ground will have to be assessed individually for environmental impacts. And the CEQA findings and the notice of exemption are provided as part of the resolution, which is Attachment 1 to the staff report. And with that, I'll hand it back to Anne, who will discuss what the next steps would be after adoption.
All right, so I think that the team kind of did a great job highlighting the pieces of the Creek and Watershed Management Plan that we've been working on. And if it sounds kind of technical and dry, it's because it's so science-based, right? And, but, don't be misled by like the science-tekky side of the presentation, because all of us are so excited to have really come from the beginning where we didn't have really any systematic data collected for our creeks, and now we have it all in one place. And we really couldn't have done it without the public and the technical advisory committee. I don't think I've ever worked on a project where a technical advisor, advisory committee was more instrumental than this project. And they really know our creek system. Our public really knows our creek system. And so let's talk about the next steps after adoption. Funding and staffing will be a huge consideration. Identifying the advisory bodies' structure will also be part of funding and staffing, because there'll be funding and staffing implications with the advisory structure. And then we'll prioritize implementation actions, or start building them into our work programs, our capital improvement programs over time. And so I think those are the main three next steps after adoption. They're big. They're almost as big as preparing the plan, but getting that plan together first is essential in order to, you know, start talking about funding and staffing. So I think that the next slide is the staff recommendation. And that's our typical staff recommendation slide, but it's adopting a resolution to, for the Creek and Watershed Management Plan. And again, I wanted to flag that we do have an errata sheet. The errata sheet is a couple pages, and it highlights typos, some minor clarifications, and then there also are several edits to emphasize the importance of groundwater infiltration. So those were just some kind of last catches that we got from public comment, and we flagged that in the response to public comment table. And then also some members of the TAC on that groundwater infiltration flagged that we could have, you know, added some more context there, and we did. And so to conclude the staff presentation, I want to highlight the fact that Guelita's watersheds are dynamic systems and they're hosts to plants and wildlife species that define our natural resources. And that Creek and Watershed Management Plan adoption will enable the city to fulfill a major commitment to the natural resources of the city and its residents. Adoption is a key step and will allow us to have further discussions about implementation and funding and staffing at future meetings. And that concludes our presentation, and I think we agreed that we would go to public comment next.
Yes, I just want to just say, just really briefly, what a report. I was so impressed. Thank you. You have a right, every right, Anne Wells, to be excited. It's so full of so much information, detail. Thank you. Thank you all for all your work on this. It's fabulous. So, so great. So yes, if you want to go to public, the public, that would be great. There you are, David.
Okay, and I would ask anyone within the webinar up who would like to speak on this item, to please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you. And our first speaker will be Brian Troutwine. Please make sure to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for your support of the Creek and Watershed Management Plan. You've shown a great deal of leadership on this issue. I'm Brian Troutwine, environmental analyst and watershed program coordinator for the EDC. I'm a member of the city-appointed technical advisory committee and I'm a member of the city-appointed Technical Advisory Committee and a 50-year resident of Greta. We are so grateful to the city for prioritizing this plan. EDC greatly appreciates the staff's and consultants' work and the public who provided input to the plan. It's a good plan. We foresee creek restoration and habitat benefits, water quality improvement, recreation, and increased tourism and economic benefits from implementation of a city creek and watershed management program. EDC's comments tonight are not so much about the specifics of the plan. Our comments are bigger picture and higher level, focusing on how to implement the plan. First, the plan should be incorporated into the city's general plan in the conservation element. Second, the city should place establishment of a creek and watershed program on the city's strategic plan. The city creek and watershed program should be staffed under Public Works, as recommended in Strategy 1.1, within parks and open space or in another department. This will ensure that the plan is not just another plan that sits on a desk, but is instead implemented. Third, EDC recommends that the city create and appoint a creek and watershed management advisory committee to guide the program and vet priorities and projects, much like Santa Barbara City's Creeks Advisory Committee, as described in Action 7.11.2. We request that you direct planning and public work staff to come back with options for creating and staffing a new city creeks program. For instance, a coordinator position that could apply for grants and coordinate project implementation when new staffing becomes feasible. We request that council direct the finance director to bring back options for funding the program so that it can hit the ground running. In terms of the desired outcome of the plan's implementation, a model we should look to is San Luis Obispo Creek. The creekside shops literally turned around to face the creek, providing more foot traffic, dining patios overlooking the creek, and events to ensure economic benefits as well as environmental improvements. Bringing in local businesses will help ensure a win-win for our community. We look forward to partnering with the city to see this process through and to achieve the intended public benefits. In closing, the plan should be adopted into the city's general plan. The plan should be developed into a city program, which should be added to the strategic plan. Staff should bring back recommendations for staffing and funding, and the city-appointed advisory committee should be named to help oversee the program. Thank you very much for your consideration of our comments tonight.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Our next speaker is Maximilian Kalber. Please make sure to unmute yourself before you start speaking.
Hello, I'm Max Kalber, Greta Watershed intern for the Environmental Defense Center and a current UCSB student majoring in hydrology. I'm also working towards a geology certificate this year and plan on working in the field of environmental consulting when I graduate. As an intern at the Environmental Defense Center, working with Brian Troutwine, I've learned a great deal about how the Greta Watershed functions and should be managed. I know several local city policies already exist to protect our creeks, such as Policy CE 2.2 discussing the conservation element of Greta's general plan, how new development projects in our city require consideration of environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And I also know of Section 17.30 of Greta's municipal code that discusses the concept of stream-side protection areas. And now for any development to occur, a hundred-foot buffer is required extending upland for the banks of creeks. On our field surveys investigating impairments within our local creeks, I witnessed multiple pollution sources and litter, many non-native and invasive plant species dominating the creeks' riparian habitat, eroding and cleared banks on many of our creeks, along with many other impairments. But as we identify these impairments, there are many opportunities that arise to address them. I've developed recommendations in regards to addressing these impairments for EDC's Greta Watershed Program 2020 master report. This involves items such as replacing flammable, non-native invasive plants with native plants and removing barriers to steelhead migration. The Creek and Watershed Management Plan has identified and summarized many of these impairments as well. I've included in my experience that our creeks can become a lot healthier if we were to simply adopt more extensive measures regarding the protection of our watersheds and all the creeks within them. That is why, on behalf of myself and my role with EDC, I'm in full support of the city adopting the CWMP tonight. I know this well-developed plan will, when implemented through a city creeks and watershed program, result in healthier and protected watersheds that people and future generations, like myself and my peers, can enjoy. I'm excited to be a part of a program that will result in real, on-the-ground benefits for the city and city residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Scott Cooper.
I thank the mayor and city council for this opportunity to comment on the Greta Creek and Watershed Management Plan. My name is Scott Cooper and I'm a 40-year resident of Greta. I'm a member of the Conservation Committee for the Santa Barbara Audubon Society, and I served as Audubon's representative on the Technical Advisory Committee for the development of the Creek and Watershed Management Plan. I am a retired professor of ecology from UCSB with special expertise in watershed science and stream ecology. Most of my comments are encapsulated in the letter you received from Audubon, but I want to highlight a few issues here. First, I urge the council to adopt the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and to begin the process of providing financial and personnel resources for its implementation. Second, I want to emphasize that our local creeks and creek corridors provide numerous recreational, aesthetic, water, and biological amenities for our community. Public input on the plan shows that Gletans most value their creek corridors because they provide habitat for native plants and animals, so they want our creeks preserved or returned to a natural state. Further, some of the plan's recommendations, such as the rigorous observance of stream bank setbacks, would both protect biological resources and reduce the damaging impacts of floods. Third, the plan contains a comprehensive inventory of environmental conditions and biological resources in our creek corridors, providing a foundation for new or ongoing monitoring programs that determine the status of and pinpoint problems with our local creeks. I would like to emphasize two expanded programs that could greatly enhance stream corridor management, namely a detailed hydrological study and continued periodic monitoring of native plants and animals, including birds and mammals. In terms of hydrology, stream health is determined more than anything else by flowing water. So anything we can do to correct hydrological problems with our impaired streams would go a long ways to protecting them. Fourth, I think the plan provides an excellent blueprint for identifying and revenueing creek problems. Toward this end, I endorse the implementation steps outlined in the NGO letter from EDC, including the integration of this plan into the city's general plan, the appointment of a Creek and Watershed Advisory Committee, and the incorporation of this plan's recommendations into the city's budgetary and planning processes. In terms of the advisory committee, we need to manage whole watersheds, so we need cooperation among all regulatory agencies, stakeholders, citizens, and NGOs concerned with the whole watershed. In closing, I thank the mayor and city council for promoting and funding the development of this plan and also thank the plan's development team, led by Anne Wells and Andy Newkirk from the city and John Davis and his team from DUDAC for their hard work and consultation in completing this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Molly Trope.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Molly Trope, and I am the Policy and Science Associate for Santa Barbara Channel Keeper, a local non-environmental nonprofit with the mission to protect and restore the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds through science-based advocacy, education, fieldwork, and when necessary, enforcement. I am speaking tonight in support of the adoption of the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and to also support EDC's recommendations for implementing the CWMP. Channel Keeper has worked in the Greta Valley watersheds for 18 years. Since 2002, we have engaged more than 600 volunteers in this work of collecting water quality data in the 12 creeks that run through the city of Greta. This long-term water quality data set is an invaluable resource that helps to tell the status of the creeks and the watershed, identify sources of pollution, and can be used to help guide policy decisions. The data that we've collected over the years has illustrated that many of these creeks that flow through the city are impaired for various parameters. To this end, we have been pleased to participate in the CWMP Technical Advisory Committee over the last year and are glad to see that the incorporation of this work in the development of this plan. Adopting the CWMP is an important step in recognizing the importance of these natural resources and the benefits they provide for people and wildlife. The plan does a great job of discussing the baseline characterization of the watershed, the creek impairments, and outlines a thorough implementation program that seeks to address these impairments. To see the suggested implementation of the program be truly implemented, we support EDC's suggestions, including adopting the CWMP into the city's general plan, establishing a staff city program, and creating a creek and watershed management advisory committee to help guide the program priorities and identifying revenue options. As a long-term local watershed-based NGO, we understand that many of these benefits will result through receipt of grant funding and private and public partnerships. We look forward to being an active partner with the city in developing the Creek and Watershed Management Program and implementing this program. And finally, I would like to thank the city's staff and their consultants at DUDAC for the great work on this document.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Eddie Harris.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Eddie Harris. I'm a member of the TAC, and I'm speaking on behalf of Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council. We recommend adopting and implementing the plan. It is a detailed outline that will be invaluable in preparing you and in preparing the entire city for the challenges that lie in the future. Climate change will require that you are prepared with a comprehensive plan, and this plan will provide you with that. And to be prepared, you will also be wise to do as EDC suggests, to incorporate the plan into the conservation element of the general plan, develop the plan into a staff city program as recommended in the plan, and to create a public creek and watershed advisory committee to provide community stewardship for the creeks and watersheds of Greta. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Joelle Kanto-Adams. Please make sure to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Joelle Kanto-Adams, and I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I am here as a representative of the UCSB Coastal Fund, a student-supported and run organization with a mission to promote research, education, restoration, preservation, and access of the coastline of the university and surrounding community. We value the protection of quality water sources that benefit both the people and all other organisms of the creeks and watershed, and are encouraged by the research that has been done on these integral ecosystems. The decline in health of water resources from pollution, human-made barriers, and a series of other factors is a consequence whose negative impacts eventually make their way to the coast. Therefore, Coastal Fund urges you to adopt and implement the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and requests that the plan be incorporated into the conservation element of the city's general plan, plan, excuse me. Additionally, a public creek and watershed management advisory committee should be formed to guide the program and vet priorities over creek and watershed enhancement projects. We thank you for your time and consideration on this important issue.
Thank you.
Okay, if any other speakers within the webinar up would like to speak, do use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. Okay. Lisa Stratton.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Lisa Stratton. I guess because the bar disconcerted. I manage the North Campus Open Space and other open space at UCSB, and I was pleased to be a member of the TAC and impressed with the work that was completed on this plan and the integration of our many comments to deepen the study. And I think the model of the city of Santa Barbara's, you know, very forward-acting protection of their creeks is, provides a nice example for what the city can do. And when the time comes that tourism comes back and some possibility of adding some tax or something to fund this would help secure these goals that I think EDC has outlined very nicely to add it to the plan and create staff to really pursue it. So it all this effort isn't wasted. You invested a lot, and there's low-hanging fruit that can be addressed, a really nice opportunities to integrate with the community through projects, both small and large. They don't all have to be huge multimillion-dollar projects, but there are some great opportunities upstream of North Campus Open Space to improve that whole watershed that you have almost full control over. So thank you very much for being a forward-thinking board and appreciate collaborating with you all on the management of your natural resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if any remaining speakers wish to speak, please do use the raised hand icon. Okay, so I see no additional hands going up, but I do have about 10 letters to read into the record, which I will do now.
Okay.
Greetings, city council. I'm in favor of the Greta Creek and Watershed Management Plan. I urge you to adopt and implement the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and request that the plan be incorporated into the conservation element of the city's general plan. CWMP is a plan that will benefit the land and community through the restoration of stream flows, providing clean water and offering flood control management, as well as providing opportunities for the public to engage in recreational and educational activities in nature. The plan should be developed into a staffed city program under Public Works Department, as recommended in the plan or in another department. Creating a city creeks program will ensure that the plan is implemented and provides the intended public benefits, such as creek restoration and clean water. The city should create and appoint a public creek and watershed management advisory committee to guide the program and to vet priorities and creek and watershed enhancement projects. I ask that you please read my comments into the record at the hearing. Thank you kindly. Formless regards, Lindsay Bolton.
Greta City Council, I live right next to the Maria Ignacio Creek in Greta. It doesn't appear that there has been any maintenance clearing or improvements made to this creek in dozens of years. I urge you to adopt and implement the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and request that the plan be incorporated into the conservation element of the city's general plan. The CWMP will protect and enhance creek habitats, ensure clean water, restore stream flows, create opportunities for passive recreation and nature-based learning, and will ensure effective and environmentally sound flood control management. The plan should be developed into a staffed city program under Public Works Departments, as recommended in the plan or in another department. Creating a city's creek program will ensure that the plan is implemented and provides the intended public benefits, such as creek restoration and clean water. The city should create and appoint a public creek and watershed management advisory committee to guide the program and to vet priorities in creek and watershed enhancement projects. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Bill Woodbridge.
Good morning. I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing my comments and I'd like them to be read into the record at the hearing. I urge you to adopt and implement the Creek and Watershed Management Plan and request the plan be incorporated into the conservation element of the city's general plan. As a longtime resident of Santa Barbara, I have a deep appreciation for our creeks and ocean. I want to ensure that future generations have the opportunity to enjoy clean creeks and a healthy ocean. Creating a city creeks program will ensure that the plan is implemented and provides the intended public benefits, such as creek restoration and clean water. The city should create and appoint a public creek and watershed management advisory committee to guide the program and to vet priorities and creek and the watershed enhancement projects. Our beaches and creeks are precious community resources. Please protect them now and for future generations. Thank you, Kelsey Maloney.
Dear Greta City Council members, please adopt the Greta Creek and Watershed Management Plan and incorporate the plan into the conservation element of the city's general plan. As you move forward, please also provide staff and funding to ensure that clean waters, waterways, and riparian habitats are implemented and maintained. Thank you for your work and support this far. I encourage you to continue the good work like this that seeks to ensure that we live in a beautiful and healthy community.
in a beautiful and healthy community. Bridgette Van Der Reij. Dear Mayor Perotian City Council members, our creeks and watersheds are one of the most wonderful aspects of our city. They are so important to our quality of life, to the quality of our environment, and to our economy, including property values. However, Galita's creeks and watersheds not only need to be protected, but also in some areas, they need to be restored and provide important habitat, clean water, and other benefits going forward. My husband and I are fortunate to live adjacent to Las Vegas Creek. Many people throughout Galita walk down our street to enjoy the watersheds, oaks, sycamores, and wildlife. Throughout the year, my husband and I visit San Pedro Creek and Watershed, as well as San Jose Creek and Watershed, to experience the birds, vegetation, amphibians, and more. We chose to live in Galita in part because of the creeks and watersheds here. We encourage so many other people who agree with this sentiment. The Creek and Watershed Management Plan before you has been thoughtfully written and reviewed. It is excellent. I urge you to adopt and implement the plan and incorporate it into the conservation element of the city's general plan. As a member of Galita Parks and Recreation Commission, speaking solely on my behalf, I know how important advisory committees are to the City Council and the city as a whole. I urge the council to create and appoint a public creek and watershed management advisory committee to assist the creeks and watershed program, including reviewing priorities in creeks and watershed enhancement projects. Also, as recommended in the plan, there should be a staffed city program to implement the plan. Thank you for considering my comments. Protecting and enhancing our creeks and watersheds are a priority and a very important part of our legacy. With appreciation, Deborah Williams. Dear City Council, the Galita Creek and Watershed Management Plan will protect and improve creeks, habitats, make sure there's a clean water, restore the stream flows, create opportunities for passive recreation and nature-based learning, and will make sure there's an effective and environmentally sound flood control management. This needs to be in the general plan. The council should also create and appoint a public creek and watershed management advisory committee to guide the program and set the priorities in creek watershed enhancement projects. Thank you, John Brooks. We urge the Galita City Council to approve and establish a program to implement the proposed Galita Creek and Watershed Management Plan. Please read our comment into the record at the hearing. Dawn and Sally Webb.
My name is Jessica Alstott, and I'm an Old Town Galita resident and a biologist, living in the San Jose Creek and San Pedro Creek watersheds. I'm writing to express my approval of and sincere thanks for completing the creeks and watershed management plan. I urge the council to adopt the plan, but we need to go farther. To ensure its success, the city must create a staffed program with positions to manage the plan. The plan shines on a light on meaningful opportunities to improve water quality, conduct habitat restoration, improve wildlife quarters, provide educational experiences in great areas where residents can seek solitude. Let's not waste the opportunity to move forward as part of a staffed city program. Thank you, Jessica Alstott. Dear Galita City Council members and fellow community members, as a local resident, I believe our creeks and watershed are precious natural resources that deserve our respect and thoughtful stewardship. Given this, I urge the Galita City Council to adopt and implement the Galita Creek and Watershed Management Plan and further request that it be incorporated into the conservation element of the city's general plan. I would also like to encourage the city to dedicate staff FTE support and an oversight advisory committee of appropriate representation to ensure that many critical aspects of the plan can be administered to achieve long-term conservation for public good. Thank you, Patrick Doherty. Dear City Clerk in Galita City Council, would you please read the following comments into the record at the November 17, 2020 meeting? I'm a former resident of Santa Barbara County, and I worked with CDFW during Steelhead Research and Management from 2013 to 2017. I'm familiar with the most of the creeks in Galita, and I value them greatly. I have read the Galita Creek and Watershed Management Plan. It appears to be a good step forward for Galita, and I urge you to adopt and implement the plan. Sincerely, Benjamin Lakish. And that concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for reading all those. I just want to thank all the people that submitted a letter, an email, and spoke. It's great to hear from you all. Thank you. Back to council for questions. Councilmember Kasdan.
So I guess a couple of things. First, let me toss it to staff to respond to some of the things that we just heard, the proposal, the idea of incorporating it into the general plan, into the strategic plan. How would... What do you react? What do you think about that? Or how would that work? Or what do you suggest?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Kasdan. As you noted, many of the comments were in support of the implementation of the CWMP. And, you know, an example is an advisory committee. There were other post-adoption implementation ideas that can be vetted later, once we develop a structure and funding. And then there were some suggestions, such as modeling after the San Luis Obispo model of facing the commercial areas, parallel and fronting the creeks. All of these ideas would be vetted for staff and a future advisory body would consider all of these ideas after we have an implementation structure and funding. So I think that that is the big takeaway that I had from some of the comments that we received about implementation. The suggestion that the Creek and Watershed Management Plan be incorporated into the conservation element, that would include a general plan amendment. It's something we can revisit after adoption and possibly during the work program process.
Okay. Councilmember Kasdan, if I may just expand on Ms. Wells's comments and give my thoughts on that as well. So we heard overwhelming support for adoption of this plan tonight, and the focus of the comments was really on implementation and specifically on the specific steps that EDC outlined as implementation steps. I think most of those steps are doable at one level or another, and I want to just address a couple of those more specifically, beginning with the identification of a program and the strategic plan. I think that's very straightforward and can be done on the next update of the strategic plan with respect to integration into the general plan. I want to just note that this plan itself does implement an action item in the conservation element already, and we can certainly, with a general plan amendment in the future, as Ms. Wells indicated, amend that action item to reference this plan. I would want to be cautious, and I would want to seek our city attorney's input on the exact way in which we do that integration. And incorporation by reference could be problematic because it could limit our ability to, for example, update the plan. The council heard as part of the presentation the need for periodic updating, for example, to the grant funding appendix, and I would want to avoid having to do a general plan amendment every time we updated the plan. And it would be unusual to incorporate the whole plan by reference. So we just... I think this is kind of a technical issue, but our question, and I just want to make sure, if we reference it in the conservation element, that we do it in a way that suitably highlights the plan, indicates that it does fulfill the action item, but that doesn't straitjacket us or impair our ability to update the plan as we need to. With respect to the appointment of an advisory committee, that's, of course, something a council can... We would seek council's direction on, and which we don't necessarily need to decide tonight, but the TAC involvement in the creation of this plan has clearly been very effective, and there's no reason in principle why we couldn't provide for continuity and allow that TAC to continue as an advisory committee that would meet as necessary as implementation items came up to advise on creeks and watershed matters. This does not have to be a... This wouldn't be a commission or a formal commission that would have standing meetings. It would be, I think, more informal, but would allow... It would be a tool for coordination and communication on issues affecting watershed and creeks that could be very effective in the way that the TAC asks. With respect to the question of staffing and financing, Ms. Wells and Mr. Newkirk already suggested that we defer those specific questions to our budget process and to our annual work program process. We foresee Public Works as being the lead department, although, of course, there will be coordination between departments, including planning and environmental review. It would make sense to defer those questions to that process. Public Works Director Charlie Ebling is here, and he can address that more specifically, but there are broader questions that have to be considered. And I think there's more work to be done on exactly how this program would be structured, how it would be placed, and how we craft it. But clearly, it... There will find a place to give this program due attention and focus. And of course, per EDC's suggestion, we can look to the City of Santa Barbara model and the San Luis Obispo model as well as examples for how we approach this. So I'm broadly supportive of the recommendations of EDC and the support. There's just... There are a lot of details that we need to work through, and these would be subsequent actions that we don't need to address tonight, that we can come back with at the appropriate time and in the appropriate context, and really think through carefully. And I just want to close by saying this clearly will be a huge win for the City of Galita and for creeks and watersheds within the city if we're able to adopt this plan tonight. And I don't want to be premature about this, but I want to just extend kudos to the entire project management team, to Ms. Wells, to Andy Newkirk, to John Davis, to our TAC, and to everybody who's been involved in this process at every level for a really extraordinary effort of coordination, of technical acumen, of public outreach and coordination that happened to make this plan a reality. So just want to close by saying that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yenboff. Ms. Green.
So... Oh. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to add something for purpose of including some context here. We are looking at the beginning of our next two-year budget cycle process. So very shortly after we come back from the holidays in early 2021, we will be starting our strategic plan updating process. And after that, we'll follow a process of having a series of workshops on the work programs for our departments. So I know some of the speakers and some of the individuals who submitted public comment probably aren't aware that we are really on the cusp of that process. So certainly, we welcome council's direction today to help us move forward and inform our strategic plan process and our work program process. So if there's a concern that when would the city get to that, I just wanted to note that we're actually moving in that direction very shortly with the beginning of our two-year budget process. So it's not a very long period before we'll have those discussions with council.
Right. So of the proposals that EDC made in terms of the strategic plan, updating that or altering that to reflect this report, the budget process to fund a new position, each of those have an existing process, an existing date certain, in essence, where we will be taking up those actions. So there isn't a need, in a sense, for us to take any other action on those particular things tonight because it's already, in essence, scheduled. I wanted to just... Before I go too far, actually, I also want to commend the report. Before I get into it, it's just great. And the one thing I would urge is more of those pictures of the animals at night sculpting around our watersheds, and particularly if schools can get them. Those things are awesome. They're just fabulous to see, you know, all around town, you know, bobcats in the neighborhoods, and they're just... They're great. I can't imagine any kid seeing that. Wouldn't it be odd to know that these animals are living in their neighborhood, you know, coming out at night? Anyway, I guess the one thing I would say that isn't... There isn't a defined process for us already is in terms of the committee and that sort of advisory committee. And it may be that the TAC itself and just maintaining the more informal TAC is the best way to go. I guess, you know, there's a diversity of different potential committees out there, committees, commissions, et cetera, and they have different roles. A lot of them requires, what I've observed, a lot of them require more work for city staff, in which city staff has to put together a report and bring it to the commission, let's say, and the commission weighs it and makes recommendations, but it adds a layer of additional work. It doesn't lessen the burden for the city. And there might be... The TAC is an experienced group. There might be some version of a committee, some advisory group, in which some of the responsibilities, some of the work can be, in essence, kind of offloaded on some committee. And I was thinking particularly in the section on implementation, there's so many items there. And Ms. Stratton, I think it was, had observed that there was a bunch of... There was a number of low-hanging fruit. And there's going to be others. There's going to be both low-hanging fruit, and maybe there's going to be some that are really essential building blocks that we need to do. And maybe... So what I'm wondering is, is there a model, some committee or commission or advisory board or whatever it is, where we can really use them to help, you know, lessen our burden, lessen the burden for the city staff? And I'm not saying it has to be exclusively. It could be a broad swath of the industries and the interests in the city. As Mr. Troutline mentioned, one of the models is that San Luis Obispo, where there's, in essence, a commercial portion in there and a tourist portion in there. And so some of these things, it might be that there are other interests that have a great deal of, you know, have a stake and an enthusiasm for participating and perhaps even funding some aspects. So I just urge you to look across the landscape and look at what opportunities, what models are there that work for us. And not to have... I'm not urging a committee for committee's sake, but what is, let's say, if we take the TAC as kind of a baseline, is there something that's better? Is there something that works better out there? And then to, you know, think about it, return at some point to let us know. Thank you. And more.
Councilmember Seves.
Yeah, a couple of questions. A lot of the public comment kind of inferred that the city was going to take responsibility for maintaining the creeks. In fact, even the staff report shows in the survey, you know, the boulders, the trees. But in page 13 of the report itself, or the plan itself, talks about the role of the flood control district. Ms. Wells, can you clarify that as far as what is their role? I mean, we're not going in to clean up the creeks. Then I have a question after that.
Oh, Mayor and Councilmember Seves, you're exactly right that we have... The city has a relationship with Santa Barbara County Flood Control. They oversee flood control in our creeks. So they're... They've got easements in our creeks, and that's what they do. So they have... But they're doing more of the mechanical things in the creeks. So that's... And that's the relationship, and we delegate that responsibility to Santa Barbara Flood Control through that easement. Then there's other portions of the creek where there's private property, and then there are a number of parcels in the creek that are in city property. So where the actions in the plan are targeting city-owned properties, that's... Those are the locations that we're talking about, is where we have either easements or we own the portions of the creek outright. So I hope I answered your question. The flood control piece of the CWMP, and they were, by the way, on the TAC, and a very active and important player on the TAC. But the flood control, the details on what flood control exactly does wasn't exactly listed out in the plan, you know, point by point, but Charlie Ebling, Director of Public Works, of course, is... Got his hands... got his hands in everything that the flood control does in the city. So if there's more questions about the particulars of that flood control arrangement, he can answer those.
Mayor Perotti, Councilmember Seves, I'll jump in real quick and just reiterate what Anne just said. I think that's exactly right, that we kind of have maybe three different conditions or more, where we have private property, flood control easements on private property, and then we have city-owned parcels that sometimes have flood control easements on our parcels, or sometimes we just own the parcels outright. So I think that is a major consideration on how we approach each one of those instances and may actually affect what we can do and what we can't do. But I think Anne was exactly right in the way she answered it.
Okay, that answers my first question. The second one has to do with private property rights. There was an email that was submitted, which I found interesting because I've been talking about this every time this project has been proposed. How is it that private properties, and is there a thinking issue? Now, I'm limited to be able to help my property because it's a butt's a creek, maybe even a concrete creek, but it's a creek. Whereas I can do things before, now I can't do it based on this plan, if I'm reading it correctly. So how do we address the taking issue on that problem?
Oh, thank you. Mayor and Councilmember Seves, I think the question, or the comment that you're referring to is in one of the letters. Commenter had some concerns about specifically Action 8.1.7, which was referring to a consideration of amending CE 2.2, which is our creek buffers. And we just want to point out that, and we responded to that commenter, that the council initiated the subpolicy for further study on January 21st, 2020, so this year, as part of a general plan amendment initiation. So any future amendment to that policy would be done via public process and vetted by the Planning Commission before returning to the city council. But just emphasizing that the policy uses the word "consider." It's not driving change in Galita's creeks. It's not driving a change to the buffers in the creeks, nor is it, nor does a creek and watershed management plan like force any action by any private landowner.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Richards, I saw your hand up a while ago. Uh-oh, where'd he go? Oh, there you go.
I hit the wrong button. Can you hear me? I'm back. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I just want to say, I want to start by saying thank you, you know, to the staff, to the members of the Technical Advisory Committee, all of the members of the public who weighed in. I really appreciate all the work, and of course, the consultants who worked on this. This is a great and valuable resource for the city. We love our creeks. Galitans love our creeks. They're a cherished natural resource in our community. And healthy creeks and watersheds are, you know, something that we really need to protect. So I'm grateful for the participation and input of so many people to get us to where we are. I want to note that, you know, it was mentioned that there's baseline data in here that was never before done, as was mentioned in the presentation. So, you know, we've never had such a comprehensive document that compiled, you know, so much about our creeks and the water quality and the watersheds in our community, certainly never in one place. And so I appreciate the discussion about implementation. And, you know, as we talked about with any plan that we adopt, you know, whether it was the pedestrian bicycle master plan or any, you know, Elwood Mesa Plan, the plan's only, you know, good as far as we can adopt it and make positive changes. But there's also inherent value in just having the plan and having the data that is in the plan. So I want to just make note of that, that, you know, no matter where we go with it from here, and I do hope that it doesn't just sit on the shelf, but there's so much important information that we're starting with and that we can update and that we can expand on and that will grow. But just to have that in the beginning is such a great thing. There's so much in here in terms of, as was mentioned, the plant and animal habitats, the ecology and the biology of the creeks, our groundwater quality, our flood control benefits, the recreational benefits, educational opportunities, and as was also mentioned, the economic benefits. And I really like the model that was put out there of San Luis Obispo Creek, you know, as we see how that flows through the middle of their city and provides not only economic benefits, but also is great recreational venue and other benefits as well. With regard to some of the suggestions, I support the implementation ideas that were put out there. I have some questions and some concerns, and I really do look forward to vetting them as we go on. I think it was, as was mentioned by staff and our city manager, we have some upcoming opportunities that are very timely for us to look at, having a discussion about how we put these items into our budget, how we look at putting them into our strategic plan. I certainly support the idea of an advisory committee. I think we need to work out how that will look, but, you know, I think we should definitely harness the input and the expertise of all of the members of the current Technical Advisory Committee. And that would be great to, you know, have them continue along and continue to advise us. But I'd like to, as was mentioned, I'd like to try to find a mechanism for creating that that doesn't put undue work on our staff, you know, and the idea would be that it would help alleviate some work without, you know, creating more work. And certainly, you know, having a city commission that is staffed and is noticed, you know, might not be the best way, but having something more informal that our staff can work directly with, I do think would be a good idea. With regard to incorporation into the general plan, I, you know, I hear from staff that, you know, that would be unique. You know, we don't typically have items that I know of that are action items or plans within the general plan. But I do appreciate that perhaps referencing it, and as was mentioned by our planning director, you know, in a way that if we want to update the plan itself, the Creek and Watershed Management Plan, that we won't have to go through a general plan amendment. You know, certainly, we don't want to create undue administrative hurdles in the long run. So, but in terms of creating a new program at the city, you know, I think that's a great idea. I would love for us to be able to support the implementation in such a way to have dedicated FTEs and staff members. As we know, though, you know, we don't have a dedicated source of funding, you know. And when we look at the City of Santa Barbara, as was put out there as a model, you know, they have a creeks and water, a creeks division, but it's also funded by a dedicated source of funding that they get from their bed taxes, their transient occupancy TOT taxes. We don't have any source of funding in that way. And we're also looking at a budget situation currently where our Public Works Department is already understaffed. And as we'll hear more about that, you know, in the coming months. You know, currently, our Public Works is understaffed by five staff members. You know, we're down. And so as much as I, you know, appreciate the value of this and encourage, you know, us looking at options, and I certainly would want to be able to have a staff person dedicated to this, we're going to have some hard choices to make. You know, spoiler alert, you know, we're, this isn't going to be an easy time for us to consider creating new programs and without any additional funding. So we really need to be able to look at what additional sources of funding we may be able to tap into. And I know that the report itself does include suggestions and a list of grant opportunities. And I think that we should explore any and all opportunities. But I, you know, but I just want to mention that without that, it's going to be very difficult to implement it to the fullest extent. So again, thank you. You know, I just want to say, I support this at this point. It's great to see so much community support for this plan. I'm glad that we're undertaking it, and I think this is a document that the city will be proud of. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Richards. I just want, I know Councilmember Kariaco has his hand up, but I'm just going to really briefly just comment that I echo everything that you just said. You know, I think you hit it right on the head, spot on. What I'm hearing loud and clear from all the correspondents that we've received and the people that called in is they, they want this plan to be adopted this evening. I'm hearing that overwhelmingly clear. But also, they don't want it to just sit on the shelf somewhere and not do anything with it. And I support that as well, that I don't, I do, I do not want that. I'm not hearing that from council as well. So I think my one question would be, in the meantime, will we be looking for grant opportunities? Is that something that we will move forward with and that we can get going on now? Is that a possibility? I don't know who could take that one, but.
I can start that, Mayor. So for the grant opportunities, we are aware, we always track grants. So we know where they're out there, but then we look at them in relation to staffing resources, because there has to be a staff person assigned to the grant. And that can be a constraint, especially a constraint for the Public Works Department. It's already kind of downstaffed, and that's probably why Charlie just put his camera on because he wants to add to that.
Oh, Mr. Ebling, I know you're understaffed. So, but I just wanted to be clear that that's part of the situation, that if we don't have the staff to do the grants, we're not going to be writing any grants? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mayor Perotti, I think we are a bit of in a chicken and the egg moment because I would tell you that with the unfilled positions within Public Works and, you know, and we talk about the five positions. If we also start to include interns and other positions that we were actually planning on adding simply because of the workload, you know, I can, I can, we could arguably talk about probably 10-plus positions that the Public Works Department needs. And so in that context, you know, I kind of wanted to say a couple of things, actually, is, is, well, first with the grants, you know, it is challenging, you know, when we're all oversubscribed, especially in Public Works, how would we have time to pursue grants? And then at the same time, what if we got the grants? And then how would we stop it? So it is challenging, but we do certainly track grants. We look at opportunities all the time. And we're doing that within other areas of Public Works, and there is some things we're working on even now to go after grants. So it is, it is a challenge, and I'm not sure exactly what the solution would be tonight on what, what exactly, how we'd go after grants, maybe try to fund a program with grants. But in general, you know, one of the things everybody's talked about a little bit is that why, it may even seem strange that why is Public Works talked about as being the implementing department for this, for this plan? And it, the first thing I would want to say is that it truly will be a partnership between all the departments and especially between Public Works and Planning because there are aspects of the implementing the plan that really are important in terms of planning and land development and those types of projects. But then the other thing I wanted to point out is just that it is a natural with our current program. We have a solid waste and environmental services program. We implement our stormwater management plan. We're the department that works with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on not only implementing the stormwater management plan, but also working to implement the, it's called an MS4 Clean Water Act permit that we, we work on. So there's a lot of overlap, and there's actually a lot of things we're already doing. You know, we, a little bit of talk was about public education and engagement. That's already part of our program in a small way. Regulatory compliance, working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that's something that Public Works does. Our enhancement and rehabilitation projects in habitats, of course. We have both Melissa Nelson and George Thompson doing extensive habitat restoration and enhancement projects within Public Works. Then, of course, we have our capital projects, our CIP program. And when it comes to delivering projects, I think that's one of the things that we've, as a group, have talked about, that, you know, Public Works still is the lead department in delivering capital projects. And we kind of take that lead in understanding the product delivery process and getting those physical projects done. So there is a lot that, you know, that this, implementing this plan would be great in terms of how it would mesh with what we're already doing within Public Works. But at the same time, as everybody's noted, it is a lot more work, and we, there has to be some consideration with regard to how we do staffing to get that implementation really going. So I thought I'd throw that out there since I had a chance. But yeah, you know, I'll go from there.
Thank you. I hear what you're saying. Councilmember Kariaco?
Thank you. I also want to echo all of the previous members of council that have complimented the work of staff, complimented the contributions that we've received from members of the public and the different stakeholders that helped shepherd this process and move this process along over the last year or so. We've spent, out of our general fund, about $330,000, $335,000 or so in the last year, out of our general fund on this plan. And I would say that it's money incredibly well-spent, depending upon what we do with our next steps. And so I think it's going to be critically important if we're going to be able to look back at a number of years on that $335,000 and really look at it as a down payment and as an investment in the quality of life for our Galita residents. We need to back it up with action. And so I do support the comments made earlier about having an advisory committee, about finding a way to incorporate this plan into, into the city general plan. I do support, support those, those concepts. I do support many of the implementation actions that were discussed, especially in terms of, you know, the advisor committee and also looking at funding sources, looking at grants. As has been pointed out, we do have a little bit of a chicken and the egg situation there because, as has been pointed out, our, our Public Work staff is, is down, and we're constantly giving them more things on their plate. And at a certain point, you have to have the revenue to pay for the things that you want to do. And, you know, it's been described as an aspirational document, and we're a council that has a lot of aspirations in a lot of different areas. And you don't get what you don't pay for. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out where the money's going to come from. I do have a couple of questions. There's been a lot of discussion about Santa Barbara, looking at them as a possible exemplar, a role model of what to do. And I know, you know, throughout the document, you can see reference to some of the things that they have found through their experience. Gosh, it's been 20 years now since Santa Barbara passed Measure B in November of 2000. So my first question is, it's been pointed out that we have an issue in Galita where, you know, we have, we have the creeks, but then there are easements, and so the actual cleanup is largely the responsibility of the county. From our look at Santa Barbara, do they have a similar situation? Or do they have more control over the creek cleanup without having to work with the county? Is that something that, that you've explored or looked at? Is that something you comment on?
Mayor and Councilmember Kariaco, the City of Santa Barbara model is something that we investigated because it's sort of the kind of cutting-edge model, at least here locally. And so Andy Newkirk spent time, a lot of time, talking to the City of Santa Barbara folks in the creeks division, so he's best to answer that question.
Okay.
Councilmember Kariaco, as far as I understand it, flood control still has a role in the City of Santa Barbara. So what they do is they have their annual maintenance plan, which they walk every creek in the county and identify places that need clearing and other treatments to address flood control issues. And I believe they do that within the City of Santa Barbara as well. In terms of where the City of Santa Barbara focuses, I mean, they have, they have, you know, obviously, a pretty big program. It's a several million dollar budget. But in terms of like restoration projects, they still focus on city-owned properties. So, you know, we do have that, that challenge where, you know, we certainly have like parks, like Evergreen Park is an example along Elencanto. We do have parks and city-owned property along and adjacent to creeks. And that's, you know, one of the things. you know, one of the things we, we highlight in those restoration efforts is to focus on city-owned property. Whereas privately owned, you know, flood control has the authority to come in and do that clearing out in their annual, annual plan. But beyond that, anything we would do, we would need to coordinate with flood control and also with the private property owners. And, and, and that can be challenging. So certainly as like a, a lower hanging fruit would be sit like creeks along city parks. But, but yes, city of Santa Barbara does focus a lot of their rest, their major restoration, certainly, where the city owns the property or where they, they have an opportunity to do a land purchase. I mean, obviously that can be, become pretty costly, but it is, that is something we, we did flag in the implementation actions is potential to purchase properties where opportunities arise, and that makes restoration improvements a lot easier. It takes out that complication.
Okay. So I, I think one thing that we shouldn't allow to get lost in this discussion is how, how the Santa Barbara approach, which is a model and really innovative and very well-funded, how it came to pass. It, it came to pass because in the late nineties, like 1998, 1999, and going into 2000, they had a lot of beach closures. They had a lot of situations during summer months, during warm, during the warm season, where people couldn't go in the water. And what I don't want us to lose in this discussion is if we're going to eventually go to the public and ask them to help fund this, or if we're going to, as representative, representatives of the public, put a significant outlay towards this because it's the right thing to do, because it's going to make this a better place to live, work, and play, we're going to need to make sure that we're really selling it, not just in terms of the aspirational pieces, but also in terms of, in terms of your daily lives and the things that you value, what are the costs to not doing something and not acting? And so I'm hopeful that as we move forward this process, as we look at advisory committees, that we look at the relationship between this plan, our stormwater, water quality efforts, and, you know, as we eventually move into the local coastal plan, how these things all go together? And how, if you do it right, you can prevent beach closures, you can have pristine creeks, you can have beautiful places to recreate, but then there's also the cost of not doing something, greater risk of beach closures, more rundown creeks, less attractive, all of those types of things. So while they may not have been the focus of this plan because the biology and the hydrology and all of that is really the primary focus here, I don't want to lose sight of what for many other people in the public are going to care about is being able to continue to enjoy all of the amenities that perhaps right now we take for granted. So that's the last thing I'll say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caston?
So I was curious, just on the, a technical question, I guess, of the design of the process. So there's been, some folks have raised the San, San Luis Obispo was kind of a commercial focus, and there's others that are emphasizing the environmental or the recreational. And I would imagine that these situations, these opportunities differ creek by creek. And so I was wondering, what is the, how would this work? Is, is, are you positioning as kind of, I guess this is like in Elwood Mesa, we have a broad master plan, and then it, there's tiered, there's going to be more plans that are tiered off of that, that are more than just individual kind of CIP projects, but, but a broader, if I remember or understand right, kind of a broader concept for what to do in a particular location. Is it likely that that's how it would work, that we would have this master plan, and then on an essence, on a creek by creek basis, we would have sort of subplans that would identify CIP projects and other sorts of actions that are needed in order to implement it, implement the vision for a particular creek?
Mayor and Councilmember Caston, so the, the vision for implementation and how the breakdown as far as if it will be one particular creek would be targeted, or one particular area, or if, if restoration is the trend, we really haven't gotten there in a systematic way yet because we're still kind of having to grapple with that, the structure, the advisory body, and the funding. That said, the plan does include some detail, and Andy Newkirk can answer that part of the question because I think it's important to respond to.
Councilmember Caston, there's, there's quite a lot, quite a bit of detail. That section four and the mapping and all the information associated with that provides a lot of information. So for thinking about something like removing invasive species, like plant species, we have a lot of that mapped, and as we move forward and we track that, we'll have that information. So if there's a, an opportunity for restoration or invasive removal, we already have that information. I think there's, there may be a concern about doing plans for plans for plans. So like, so there's no actions in the CWMP that call out to do specific follow-up planning exercises. There may be instances where that might be appropriate, where there's several competing interests, like, you know, in a city park, for instance, where there may be recreational demands and restoration demands from our different planning documents where we want to kind of reconcile those things. So there may be opportunities for that, but nothing like that is specifically called out. In terms of kind of the bigger projects that I think are in program 12 or 13, a lot of those impairments have been mapped. So the locations of where specific types of impairments, like kind of fence revetment within the creeks themselves, they've been identified. So we may be able to kind of move forward, you know, when the opportunities arise to directly address those impairments rather than kind of specific creek plans for each creek as we go along.
Okay. So any kind of vision, let's say, so you've identified particular impairments, projects, and improvements, and restoration actions that can be, that can take place particularly on city land, but any sort of commercial or other sorts of visions might be the consequence or the product of whatever kind of committee, advisory committee we come up with, or something like that, that members of the public weighing in?
Yeah, I should, to specifically address the question about kind of the commercial idea and like the example of SLOW, that's not something that we really focused on. Councilmember Kariaco mentioned that. We were looking at really like the biology, the flooding, the water quality issues. So that could be something that gets looked at down the road, even like an update to the plan as, as this gets updated over time to incorporate other elements, other kind of issues, but that's, it's just not something that was considered at this point.
Right. I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Sevis?
Mr. Newkirk, the county flood does their, their inspections every March and April. Do we join them on their surveys? If not, do they provide us with the results of their surveys? And finally, does this plan allow us to implement results of their surveys where we have to take some, some action?
So in terms of the process, I don't believe historically we've, I mean, we've done the walks with them. That's something we can seek to do in the future. I'm not sure exactly how, you know, how that would work. They do, they do also have a process where they summarize their information and identify the locations in which they will do routine maintenance for that year. So they do their creek walks earlier in the year, and then in the summer, they release their annual maintenance plan for comment. So that's something we can review and comment on and perhaps provide suggestions as to alternative approaches or areas to focus on. And we could certainly try to use that information to identify, you know, additional efforts that we could undertake beyond what flood control will do that year. But that's, I don't think historically we've like, we've been, we've commented on their plan, but that's something that we can do, and, and we have flagged that kind of greater coordination with flood control and their annual maintenance plan is something to do in the future.
If, if there's anything we can incorporate in our plan.
Councilmember Sevis, I did just want to add something in addition to what Mr. Newkirk had just mentioned, if I could just do that briefly. In the past, flood control has been very responsive to the city when we have asked questions about vegetation removal and silt removal that they have planned and have done in our creeks in advance of the winter season, when we wanted to ensure that steps were taken to avoid flooding issues. In particular, we've reached out to them in the years when El Nino conditions are present and a heavier winter season is expected, and they, they have been very responsive, saying, you know, in great detail what work they undertook and where and which creeks, which segments. But oftentimes, if we ask for specific maintenance work, it's not always possible to have that undertaken immediately because of the way they plan out their work programs far ahead of time because it does also require mobilization of equipment and personnel, and it, it can be trickier to have them do something on the spur of the moment. So just wanted to add that in. They have been responsive and collaborating with us as we prepare for winter storm events, but I think as Mr. Newkirk suggests, getting into routine of commenting on their maintenance plans annually is something we should be doing regularly. I think it's a great way to collaborate.
Okay. I think it needs to be part of our program so we don't miss information, and, and we really should be working whether or not, and not wait until the report comes out. And I don't know if we can spot check with them what they're doing or having, you know, communicate with them weekly, I don't know. But it seems to me that you could develop some critical information that'll help us in advancing our plan instead of waiting to see what they're going to do for maintenance.
Okay.
I'll just note that we do have a specific action, action 5.1.3, which is focused on pursuing a cooperative relationship with flood control beyond the existing relationship, but that is something we specifically flagged as important as an implementation.
Great.
Great. Make it a subsection A, where we're going, we're going to get the reports in a timely manner.
Are we ready to entertain a, a motion to get this adopted? Who would like to do that? Mayor Protem Richards?
Sure. Happy to. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I will move that we adopt resolution number 20, next in line, entitled the resolution of the city council of the city of Galleta, California, adopting the creek, adopting the city of Galleta Creek and Watershed Management Plan, along with the errata sheet that we were given as well.
I'll second that. Kariaco.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Well, I, I just wanted to say that I look forward to having this discussion moving forward on when we're looking at our budget and possible funding and how can we implement this and get an advisory committee together? So I look forward to that discussion possibly in January. Is that what you said, Michelle? Was it January? Yes. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to remind the motion maker to add in with the errata sheet.
He did.
On top of it.
Okay. All right. So I, first and a second, any more discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Sevis?
Aye.
Councilmember Caston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kariaco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem ProRichards?
Yes.
Mayor Prode?
Aye. Eyes have it, it's unanimous. Good work. Great. This is great. Great thing. Yay. If we, if you could hear us, we're all clapping.